We'll call the meeting to order and thank everyone for their attendance. We've got quite a few things to go through today, and we're going to start off with a very exciting thing that I think we know that we've got the 2017 Annual Conference of Sister Cities International, which everyone's excited about. And Ruth, are you going to tell us about this, please?
We don't have a PowerPoint for you today, but we have people in person.
Okay.
My young man is not here yet, so I'm going to introduce Carolyn Garrett. She is the Chairman of the Arts and Humanities, and she's also the Vice Chair of Sister Cities Association of Virginia Beach, and she is the only board member who's ever attended an annual conference of SCI.
Well, she brought you luck.
She was there to hear it announced.
And we thank you for that.
And then I want to introduce Rebecca Gurley also, because Tallwood High School has been so much help to our Sister Cities organization. The young man that's coming, Andrew Clark, is from Tallwood, a rising senior. So we're excited to have Rebecca here, too.
Absolutely.
And I hope he'll come in shortly, but I'm going to let Carolyn tell you all about it.
Carolyn, delighted to have you and Rebecca also. It's so nice to have you both here.
Well, I'm excited to be here, and I'm excited to be here because of the reason that I'm here. I'm Carolyn Garrett, as Ruth said, and I am the very proud Vice President of Sister Cities. I've been with Sister Cities for a very long time, and the reason for that is I believe in the policies and the principles of that particular organization. But for the last two years, I have had the great opportunity to go to the conference, and I want to tell you a few things that I observed and what happened while we were there. The first thing I noticed last year when I attended was that Virginia Beach is very well-respected by the Sister Cities organization. And remember, this is an international organization.
The forces were known worldwide as the best city in the world.
We're there. You're stealing my line, Mayor. And you don't even have on your dancing clothes.
Oh, Lord. That was a wringer.
If you all didn't see that, you needed to be there. As was stated repeatedly at the conference this year, when we connect globally, we thrive locally. And I know that's what we want for our city and for our citizens. And when we talk about diplomacy at the municipal level, this conference is the epitome of that statement. While we were there, we had the opportunity to talk on personal level with people from across the globe. Remember, I'm using those great big words of globe, not nation, and that kind of stuff. Mrs. Frazier and I shared dinner with the head of a large Chinese delegation that was there, and since this was a multi-station buffet, we all know about those, we had to leave the table several times. And the Chinese gentleman that was head of the group that was sitting next to me, he said, "You go ahead. I'll watch your purse." Now, this was a simple statement, a simple statement but glaring in its international similarity. We know the world is getting smaller. We all say that all the time, and as it gets smaller, we have to develop relationships that encourage trust. This has been a major concept of Sister Cities for a long time. We also had the occasion to share dinner. We did other things besides eat, but we did share dinner with three individuals from Cape Town, South Africa. And I don't know about you, but I don't know a lot about Cape Town, and it was interesting to talk with them. One of them was actually a city councilperson, and he also belonged to Sister Cities, but yet he had been in jail for his political beliefs. And they told us all about that. And when I read about Cape Town now, I bring those faces to mind, and I have somewhat of a relationship with that, and that's the important part of Sister Cities. On the opening day of the conference, I cannot tell you how moving it is to see all these young folks carrying flags from cities across the world. And of course, we're sitting there like everybody else, staring and looking because we are anxious to see Virginia Beach. And guess what? Virginia Beach is there. Ms. Frazier would have it no other way. It's also amazing to hear the similarity of problems in cities and families and individuals. The youth program that is parallel to the conference is absolutely amazing. These young folks are coming, just like our Andrew did. They're coming, and they are studying diplomacy with individuals from Washington while the rest of the conference is going on. And at the end of the conference, they have to report out to us, and their positive attitude and the pride in the information they shared is absolutely refreshing. Of course, Andrew made us very proud because he stood up and spoke also. And again, I have to refer to that Chinese, that very large Chinese delegation that I mentioned. Each of the students there stood up and spoke. They spoke in very limited English, and they told about their experiences. One Chinese student referred with humor to the fact that he was sorry, but he lost his tense. As a former teacher and principal, I thought it was very brave of him to say that. I understood what he was saying, and he was very brave to speak. I was glad they didn't ask me to speak in Chinese. I'd have lost my tense, too. He also mentioned his amazement at how people kept speaking to him as they passed him in the hallway and as he went into the rooms. He said, "They keep speaking to me," and he said, "We don't do that in our country. China doesn't do that." He says, "I'm going to try that when I go back." And I think at that point, we are going to have this conference in Virginia Beach. How excited we all are. We're standing here with our arms wide open because we can't wait for it to happen. It's such a great opportunity for us to show off our city. There is so much to see in Virginia Beach. There is so much energy in Virginia Beach, and there is so much talent in Virginia Beach. We will continue the program of developing grassroots diplomacy, but think of the economic impression that this particular conference is going to make on this city. Hundreds of people visiting our shops, our restaurants, beaches, and places of interest. We want to partner with you, City Council, to make us even more successful at this event. At each of the conferences I've attended, the host city, the council people have been extremely involved in the conference, and we're going to need you to do that, to help us out, to make us proud, to show us that we can do this, too. And of course, we need the financial assistance to make this work, and I'm hoping that you're going to see your way to help us out with that. After Virginia Beach was chosen, the comments spread throughout the conference. "We're going to the beach." Now, remember, we were in Minneapolis, Minnesota. That's pretty far away from the beach. And they kept saying, "We're going to the beach. We're going to the beach. We're going to the beach in 2017." And as the mayor is fond of saying, "This is the greatest city in the world, and we cannot wait to show it off." We do have Andrew, don't we? No, we don't have Andrew. I'm hoping he will show because I said to him the other day, "Andrew, what did you really think about this conference?" He said, "It was fantastic. It was terrific." And Andrew's pretty bright, and he really showed us well when he stood up to speak, and he's part of the Global Studies Program, as we just heard. And I wish I could say his speech for him, but I don't have any idea what he was going to say, other than I know that he was very excited. So please think about the conference and know that it is going to be a boon to the city, and we're going to work as hard as we can, and we need you to work with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Any questions or comments, so Carolyn? I can just say we're very excited about this. Ruth called me after they had opened the award, and so that could not be better. And Rebecca, we're delighted with what you're doing over there with the Global Studies at Tallwood, too. I mean, every time I'm around young people, I get more and more excited. You know, they're so talented, so much smarter than me, and that's the way it ought to be. That's the way it ought to be. But we thank you for everything, and we will help you. Thank you. All righty, we'll move on. The City Manager Executive Search and Public Input Process, as you recall, we have -- last week, we voted on getting a professional to help us with individuals to be interviewed, and that today was executed through purchasing. But we also started talking about the process that we would like to use with the public as far as, you know, getting input from our citizens and our employees as to the type of qualities that they'd like to find for our next city manager. And some of the things -- and I hope you all noticed, Mr. Moss did send comments on a lot of things, but on that one, he did mention some of the things that we had talked about, and like having our districts have a meeting at each district member's convenience and ask for input on what we'd be looking for as far as the city manager. We would, you know, and the purpose of this is to let any council member elaborate on what they would recommend. I also suggested that I would host five meetings with employees, about 20 employees each, and ask for input from them. I would, at the same time, invite a council member to attend that meeting, each a different council member, and would usually at-large members first since they don't have districts to get the information from. But anyway, anyone could come for that matter, because it wouldn't be -- I'm not going to say that yet. I mean, does that have to be held? Tell me.
If you're going to have more than two council members.
Well, I understand that, but I mean, would I have to have that meeting that way?
I'm sorry, I'm not following the question.
I want the employees to feel comfortable saying whatever they want to say. That's what I'm trying to say.
Okay. As long as you don't have more than two council members, it can be a close meeting.
Well, that's still to be determined, then, okay? And I love y'all's input on how you'd like that to be held, you know? But any other thoughts that we want to put together? Because before you know it, things are going to, you know, the end of the year will be here, you know? Summer's almost over, and, you know, I would suggest if y'all are interested in doing those district meetings, you know, I think you normally have a regular meeting anyway, but I'd ask that that get put on the, you know, get that going pretty quick. I will get the employee, Regina Hillier's going to help get employees to these meetings, you know, where there can be a conversation, not, you know, I mean, I hope not to say anything. You know, I want to listen to the employees and things along those lines, but what else? What other thoughts are out there? Oh, one other thing, if you also remember, the group that we've selected has a way to go through the Internet to employees and to citizens, you know, gaining information. Rosemary.
We also had talked about a committee of various stakeholders representing different organizations and groups.
Absolutely.
And we have, there's a lot of different groups that we really need to reach out to.
Ms. Regina, here. All right. Will you keep track of all these things that we're asking for? I'd really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
And this is a big deal.
It is.
It's a really big deal. We haven't had to do this 24 years or longer.
Yeah. Can we get a few more?
You know, and it's going to be, it's going to be really important. I mean, one of the reasons that we're the greatest city in the world is because we've had such great leadership.
That's true.
And we want to continue that. So I think that there's going to be a lot of good people who are going to want to be in this position because they're not coming to a city full of problems. They're coming to a city that's full of promise.
And opportunity.
Yeah. Not problems, but promise.
Yeah, that's right.
And it's going to be really important that the community feels like they've been engaged in this selection process.
Couldn't agree with you more. Great idea. Anybody else?
Do we want to have public sector meetings and employee meetings? I'm unclear.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
What is the timeframe? I mean, as far as, I would think that we need to begin these meetings pretty quickly.
Well, I'd like you to do your district meetings as soon as you can get them scheduled. I will, and Regina's going to start figuring out how to get, I think, a 20-member employee, you know, maybe over, all at the table, talking, you know, would be manageable, you know? But Regina, I welcome your guidance on that, if you think we could add more or less, whatever you think. And I think the company that we've hired will be able to guide us on that, too, but we've just signed the contract today, correct?
Well, they've been notified today, yes.
They've just been notified today because of the process we had to go. Yes, sir.
Would the vendor be at these meetings?
The vendor will certainly be at some. I've got to understand exactly what number of meetings they can attend within the price that we're paying them, and frankly, if someone wanted them at their meeting, I would consider that a priority to get them there. If we had to pay extra, it wouldn't bother me a bit.
It would just seem to me that if they're going to be doing the initial search and narrowing it down, then they need to know what comments are in hand.
I think that's a great point, and Regina, we need to discuss that.
What's the latest that we could have the meetings, do you think, Tommy? Is anybody?
I would try to have them done by the end of September.
By the end of September.
Yeah, the latest.
Yeah, forgive me for running late.
We're just glad to see you.
I'm glad to be seen.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. Oh, Lord, 65 Medicare eligibility. Was there discussion about combining some of the districts into clusters and, you know, doing it that way?
Well, you know, that has happened before, and I'd welcome that.
Because I was thinking, maybe Amelia and Shannon and I, district has a lot in common in terms of population density and demographics and characteristics. Would it be better, you know, especially this way, we can bring in consultants, and they'll have at least a number of districts, so, you know?
I put it to y'all. It's totally up to y'all.
We'll talk about it as we've done with the budget.
Yep, we did it with the budget and some other stuff, and then we have the at-large folks.
Well, another thought, with this being such a really important decision and process, I also don't think we should feel rushed.
Couldn't agree with you more.
I don't think we should feel rushed, and we also should probably have a plan in case we need to have an interim person between when Mr. Spoor leaves and we hire a new person to come in.
Excellent point.
And that's something maybe you'd be thinking about, so there can be some good, we want good flow, good transition in this process.
Could not agree with you more. Really couldn't. Other comments? Damn you.
It's all your fault, Jim.
It's all your fault.
Watch your language.
Darn you.
Jim?
I guess the other question I would have or comment is, is I think a lot of people don't realize what the city manager does, and it's not because, it's just that concept. I mean, I think if you ask a lot of people, who's in charge of the city, they're going to say the mayor, and who handles day-to-day operations and that sort of thing. It would seem to me that there needs to be some sort of education component in this because if we have a meeting where people come out and they want all these qualities in a city manager that frankly is outside, you know, what his job would be, and I don't know if there's.
That's a really good point.
If there's a method whereby we could do that.
I think on to something, there's a way we can, I guess we'd have to figure out how to promote it, but explain what the council manager, former government is.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, I think that would be the best way to do it.
That's a good start.
Yeah, yeah.
Put something like that online or somewhere where the public can?
Well, you know, especially with this headhunter having all that access, you know, through technology, that might be one of the opening paragraphs, you know, defining what the council manager, former government is.
That could be the opening to the district meetings as well, a three, five minutes.
It could be. Really could be.
Yeah, and, you know, Mr. Spoor and I had a meeting the other day, and we were discussing about some of the future budget challenges that we may be having, especially in 2017. You know, this may be the opportunity to bring the public to the table, you know, for another discussion about letting them know some of the budget things that we're facing in terms of what's going on with the EPA and potential sequestration and some of the other fiscal challenges we're going to have going forward. Once again, we repeat that Mr. Spoor said we're looking at 1.5% growth for the next five years, and, you know, just to get a temperature and a pulse on what the public is going to think about what the priorities should be and what, you know, maybe give us some direction on what to do going forward.
And please understand, these are your meetings, not the mayor's meeting. But I would ask that the major emphasis be. Without question. Solely, you know, all but the city manager talents we're looking for. Certainly, if something else comes about, fine. And again, I'm not dictating here. I'm suggesting. All right? Any other comments? Yes, ma'am?
So we go through the process of the district meetings and the employee meetings, and we get a wish list, if you will, of what characteristics we're looking for, then we are able to narrow it down to three, four, or five candidates. Then does the public then get input at that point?
If you recall, we've agreed, except for one member of council, that the interviews will be confidential.
You're right. I forgot. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, doesn't this headhunter group have a suggested process, suggested procedure? Maybe we need to hear from them.
And again.
Because it's been many years since I was a part of this, but, I mean, it was even before him because I wasn't here for him. But I thought they met with each other.
You messed up one of the best decisions I've ever made.
With one of the, they'd meet with the council members. So what is their point in that?
Candidly, I was hoping, I was hoping that I'd have information from them today, Barbara, and because of the process we have to go through in purchasing, really, they weren't even communicated until today. But I think they're going to be able to splash with a lot of information.
I think they will tell us what we're going to do.
We're all up here kind of winging it right now, but we said we were going to put it on the table, and that's what we've done today, and that we're going to make sure that the public gets a lot of input on what they'd like to see. At the same time, we've been quite clear that the interviews will be confidential, and I believe with good reason, and it's, I've taken one on doing it that way. Okay, anything else?
Ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
It is included in the process that they will have meetings with the mayor and council, so they will be able to get your direct input as well.
Oh, absolutely.
That's what we'll do.
Okay. But I think, and basically, Louis and I'll be the liaisons with them when they're not meeting with the council at this point. Okay. All right, we'll move on, then. Thank you all very much for your time. We'll now go to the comprehensive plan update. Gerald Phillips, we welcome you, and good luck.
I can just do a brief intro. Mrs. Henley had asked that we have a kind of a status report and an updating on where are we in the revision of the comp plan process before you had the mid-year retreat on the 24th of August. So Gerald is here to kind of let you know where we've been and what we're working on and what the rest of the schedule is.
Gerald, glad to have you.
Thank you, Mr. Spoor. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. It's a pleasure to be here with you today, as Mr. Spoor said, as you head into your retreat, to give you an update on what we've been working on with regard to reviewing and updating the city's 2009 comprehensive plan. I'd like to acknowledge, we have one of our planning commissioners with us today, Ms. Dee Oliver. She's been very engaged in the process, has been the entire planning commission.
I'd be happy to.
And we really appreciate that. Also have Barry Frankfield with us from the Planning Department.
Barry, it's okay to have you.
I don't have a speaking part today.
Barry, we're glad, we're delighted. You know that.
We're all happy for that. Thank you, John.
I have some of the staff that have also been part of the project management team from our strategic growth area office, our transportation planning manager, Brian Solis, our transit planner, Mark Shea, and Tara Reel, who's been with us interning over the summer. Glad to have her back.
Nice to have Tara, seeing her over again.
So what we've been about is the Code of Virginia asks that we take a step back every five years and look at what's in our comprehensive plan with the planning commission and determine if it is in need of updating in any fashion. We've been preparing comprehensive plans since 1979. Our sixth comprehensive plan was adopted in December of 2009. It consists of three elements. There's a policy document, which is the city's policy statement guiding our long-range growth and development. There's a technical report that contains data on existing conditions, our maps, and all of our supporting studies, and also a reference handbook that contains reference material, including any of our design guidelines, all of our plans and studies that have been adopted by reference into the comprehensive plan, and an agenda for future action. This is a plan that the planning commission prepares with broad public engagement, and it is in the form of a recommendation to City Council. So this review and update, the plan that is produced from this, will be our seventh comprehensive plan. Just to give you a snapshot of what the 2009 comprehensive plan policy document contains, it starts off with an introduction reflecting City Council's priorities, the desired outcomes for the plan, and a history of city planning and the trends that were the basis of bringing forward the plan recommendations at that time. The first part of the plan is based on geographic areas. It's land use policies by different areas of the city, including our urban, suburban, Princess Anne Transition Area, and rural area. And then there are three citywide elements in our current plan: the master transportation plan, an environmental stewardship framework, and a housing and neighborhoods plan. So that's what we are reviewing. Our goals with the project are, first of all, to take stock of how we have been implementing the plan, what's worked really well, and to build on those successes, and then to look forward. It's a forward-focused planning horizon of 20-plus years. We may want to give some consideration to putting a future date on the plan instead of a backward date of the date of adoption to keep us looking forward. A number of the region plans have a 2040 date. We have envisioned Virginia Beach 2040. It might be time to begin aligning this. We certainly have an opportunity with this plan to consider the destination points, our goals, our desired outcomes with envisioned Virginia Beach 2040, to see how this plan is currently aligning with it and take steps to better align with it. Also, the recently adopted sustainability plan, which is a citywide plan, and other local and regional plans. We certainly want this plan to be responsive to the public, our citizens, as they've provided input to us throughout this process, to the planning commission direction, and to your direction. Certainly to any, be responsive to any emerging trends that are happening, both at the local level as well as the regional and national levels. And we need to be responsive to state planning mandates. One of the things that we do is we take a look at how the Code of Virginia has been amended since the last plan was adopted, and we have three new mandates. The first is to consider how our transportation system is, and in the future, how it can better accommodate the transportation and transit needs of special needs populations, in particular, our senior population. The second is to reflect the state's stated preference and technical guidance for living shorelines, for shoreline stabilization projects. And the third is planning for and incorporating adaptation strategies for recurrent flooding and sea level rise. So those are our goals for the project as we've been working our way through it. Just to give you some milestones on where we've been, we started off the process at the beginning of 2014 with an internal review beginning to take stock of where we were with the 2009 plan, its implementation status, what were some of the major issues and trends that have been occurring that we need to take into consideration, and what are some preliminary themes that were bubbling up, and how are we doing with plan implementation. This time last year, we kicked off the process officially with the planning commission and with City Council. We asked for initial input at that time before we then went out for our Phase One Public Input Process in the fall, October and November of last year. That included both in-reach to city staff. We had over 80 staff members join us for two workshops representing over 14 departments to give us their input on the current plan, its strengths and its weaknesses, and again, issues and trends going forward that we needed to consider. Then we went out and held five regional public open houses around the city. We had over 120 citizens join us and provide input about the plan. We used an interactive process after we had a presentation on the plan overview. We incorporated citizen surveys into We incorporated citizen surveys into that and we also had a virtual town hall survey. We collected all those comments. And we also gave briefings to a few groups that had invited us to be with them, Virginia Beach Vision and the Central Business District Association. Just wanted to share with you what we heard from the public. The most frequently stated things that our residents want to see remain the same, what's really important to them as we look forward of the next 20 years. Parks and open space are very valued, our rural area, we've got great schools, we're known for those, and people would like, really enjoy our rec centers and you'll see they'd like to see some more of those. So it's a snapshot of what's really important to people. Things that our residents said they'd like to see improved over the next 20 years. Transportation and transit, this is a key theme of the 2009 plan and that continues coming forward with this review and update. Environmental stewardship, looking for additional employment opportunities, particularly to be able to attract, keep and attract young people to the city. People are really enjoying the bike lanes and the improvements that have been made to those throughout the city. But we'd like to see some more of those. Connectivity was very important to our citizens. Where we can have more green space and open space, protecting the areas that we do have, adding more, and certainly protection of our rural area. We had a lot of input from our citizens along the Shore Drive corridor. And maintaining the residential character of that area and use of the beaches was particularly important to them. Plustering the growth for our strategic growth areas. We've completed the master planning for those areas and we've moved into implementation. So continuing to move those plans forward into action. And lastly, a compatible mix of uses, a variety of housing lifestyle choices and affordable housing.
All that public input, how many people do you think have been, have put in, put in?
At our regional public open houses, our sign-in sheets, we had over 120. For our regional, excuse me, our virtual town hall survey, we had about 30 responses. And people at the open houses also filled out surveys while they were there. So we've had a...
I didn't mean to interrupt, Judge.
That's all right. That's all right. And again, we've had some stakeholder groups that we met with as well. So rising to the top, when we ask what are the two most important planning issues that the planning commission should consider as they update this plan, transportation, environmental stewardship, and more specifically, under transportation, these things, not only addressing congestion, it seems to be a perennial thing, providing more mode choices. And our current comprehensive plan is a multimodal plan, so continuing to build on that, including better transit, roadway design improvements, and again, connectivity. Environmental stewardship, stormwater management, recurrent flooding, planning for sea level rise, very much on the minds of our citizens, especially those who are experiencing those things, as well as more parks and rec facilities. So some themes that began to emerge from the public input, as well as our internal city staff stakeholder input, again, transportation, providing choices, community connectivity, continuing to create opportunities for people to get from point A to point B without necessarily being in a vehicle. Environmental stewardship and resiliency planning. Parks and open space and protection, our rural area protection, and really celebrating the contributions of our agricultural economy to the city's overall economy, and bringing that forward in the rural area plan. Affordable housing, aging, neighborhoods and commercial centers, the aging of our population and their accessibility needs, as I mentioned, the state having a planning mandate on that now. And certainly on the minds of staff, infrastructure planning and maintenance of infrastructure. That's what we heard. And we put that all together in a report to the planning commission in February, along with all of our taking stock information. We also submitted our budget request at the time for the project, which was subsequently approved. Thank you. Concurrently at that time, we were also wrapping up some work of a citizens advisory committee for the transition area, who was taking a look at Chapter Four of the comprehensive plan and providing recommendations for updates to those policies, as well as the transitionary design guidelines. So got a little bit of a kickstart on the update process, spent a lot of time working on Chapter Four. So we come into this process with the body of that work completed. So that was adopted also in February. And then the planning commission decided that they would like to review each chapter of the comprehensive plan, and we held a series of seven workshops between February and May. Great engagement from the planning commission. This is really wonderful. And we went chapter by chapter. We had staff presentations and staff resources available. Some of our citizens were present and got really great input. So we've been digesting all of that input and continuing to work with some of them as they've expressed interest on actually doing some plan drafting. So this is where we are now, in the summer and the fall of 2015. We are in that initial drafting phase, taking in all of that input, continuing to work with the planning commission as they express their interest in drafting with us. We're taking that information and pushing it out internally into our departments and letting city staff weigh in on that, making sure that they're comfortable with it. And also, they work with, as liaisons, to council-appointed boards and commissions, such as the Bike Ways and Trails Advisory Committee, et cetera, Bayfront Advisory Committee. So we want to make sure that we continue to have a public engagement process in a small group setting as we're doing this initial drafting. And we should be in a position come October to begin bringing forward these draft chapters to the planning commission in a preliminary fashion so that they can chew on them. Ag advisory commission is another one I wanted to mention, as the rural area chapter has been being worked on. As we move through this phase, I just wanted to touch on some things that are really important to us that we've heard and we want to make sure that we address. Certainly, again, the citizen priorities, as we heard through the public input process, and the state planning mandates. Incorporating all of that public, planning commission input for each chapter with that continued stakeholder involvement as we move forward over the next few months. We have been undertaking a modeling study of our transportation system. It's a citywide model that's going to validate, or not, our planned transportation system for a primary roadway network. And it will reveal to us if any changes need to be made to that in terms of where roads are planned and at, you know, what the lane calls are, how wide those roads should be. And that's the first time we've had that modeling done in a long, long time. So we're very excited to be building our transportation plan on that this year. And we should have those results here later this month and into next month. One of the things that we heard were concerns about drainage in the southern part of the city, where we have particularly high water tables, poorly draining soils, we have a bit of development activity going on in the transition area. And giving due consideration to including a map and some policies for areas of special consideration for drainage, where we might be looking at master drainage studies prior to discretionary plan review consideration. We suggested to the planning commission, and that they agreed, that one of the elements that we're missing from the comprehensive plan is a chapter on economic vitality. We have a robust city, but our long-range goals and strategies for economic vitality are not currently reflected in the plan in an acute way. So it's important that we tie our land use plans with our economic development strategies to bring about the best projects in the right places in the city. So we're excited about adding that chapter as a citywide chapter. I mentioned there's an agenda for future action. That's where we stay in the short term and in the long term. Now that we've updated the plan, what we think it's important to do next, and in talking with the planning director, it's very important that we use that agenda to prioritize the systematic updating of our adopted area plans. We have a number of plans, the master plans for the strategic growth areas, as well as other areas in the city, starting to show a little age. And as they get built out, things change. So it's time to refresh those. And we need to go about prioritizing with the planning commission where we feel we need to go and in what order. It's important that the comprehensive plan also provide guidance about capital improvement planning for infrastructure. And we want to make sure that the plan speaks to that very specifically in terms of its implementation. And we'll be finalizing our technical report and our design guidelines that complement the plan. So going forward, as we bring forward this draft, what I'll call preliminary draft chapters to the planning commission, once they're comfortable with it, and we have a draft plan, we'll bring that forward in January and then move that out to the public for our second round of public input. This is where we would have another round of public meetings, public information meetings. We would address how the plan has addressed the public priorities. And we would also have an opportunity for online review and comment again. We'll take all of that comment into consideration, incorporate that into a final draft plan, and turn that around in March, and have an official 30-day public comment period, moving into an adoption phase for planning commission with public hearing and thereafter with city council. So that's our timeframe for finishing this out.
We thank you very much for your presentation. Questions or comments, Barbara?
Since I've asked for it, you know, all year in the major projects update, been showing that the project, the comp plan would come to the council in November of this year. Couple months ago, I noticed it has slipped to March and I wondered why, and now I see it's slipped to May. It's slipped then nine months, or several months, which is nine months now. We've got nine months of decisions to make in between with the comprehensive plan, still in different stages of adoption. I was just wondering why it has slipped so much. You know, we've got this retreat in August and then our big retreat in January, and we still won't have the comprehensive plan to guide us. I think it's really important, if we know whether or not you're anticipating that there are going to be any changes in policy or changes in what we're doing, because we've got a lot of planning and a lot of decisions to make before we get the comprehensive plan if it's not going to come until May of next year, which happens to be the same time we adopt a budget. That might be a little tough. So I was just wondering, you know, if you're, what slowed it down so much? And what are we going to do in the meantime? And are you anticipating major changes? Is that why it's slipped so much? Because if you are anticipating changes in policy, we need to know before we go to this retreat. So we need to know what the changes are going to be.
Yes, ma'am. When we began the process, we had not built in that series of workshops that we accommodated and were happy to be a part of with the planning commission from February to May, those seven to eight workshops. The planning commission has been very, very engaged in wanting to learn the plan. We've had a bunch of new planning commissioners come on board since the last plan, really getting familiar with it and providing their input and taking all of that into consideration into our drafting. I don't anticipate any major policy changes. One of the key things I mentioned is planning for adaptation and strategies for recurrent flooding and sea level rise. We do have a three-year study underway in the city, looking on a watershed-by-watershed basis. We will not have the results of that work in time for this plan. The comprehensive plan's not going to lead on that, but we will be incorporating over time the results of that plan. The modeling for the transportation system is really, really important. As I mentioned, we haven't had the benefit of that in the past, and that work will not be completed until the end of August, September. That's what our transportation system needs to rest on in terms of recommendations going forward. So I apologize for the delay, but we've had a lot of great input and we want to make sure that the plan reflects that. As I mentioned, we've had a few planning commissioners working side by side with us, even on one of the chapters, the rural area chapter. Don't anticipate any major policy changes in there, but a real celebration of our agricultural economy as a very vibrant part of our community.
We're going to be making eight months' worth of decisions along the way, so.
Louis.
It seems to me that before that January 2016 action takes place, and that is the draft plan presentation to the planning commission and in public open houses and online review, comment, comment, seems to me that we ought to get a copy of what that's going to be ahead of time.
Sure. We can do a briefing in that regard.
If there's something in there, particularly for the district council people, that we have problems with and so forth, we want to make sure we get our input into it before you take it out and present it to the public.
Sure.
Can you make a note of that then? That'd be great. Amelia?
Just wanted to ask, what are you all doing about getting more public input? Because you're saying 120 here, so-and-so here. This is a 446 thousand, so that we have a majority voice within it. How are you approaching that, the first thing? And I noticed, nothing was said, I keep looking back, to do anything to do with energy, waste management. Those are missing, and those are key parts, especially with coming out to looking at recyclables and so forth, and the initiatives, the wind partnerships with the military, like when we had that about the mayor's, your energy advisory committee. How come those are not in there? And what are you doing about more public input?
Okay. Take your first question on public input. We could, we would appreciate much more public involvement in this process. This is a city, citizen-derived plan, and we...
I said I didn't have a speaking part, but we have already discussed with our new communications director that she is going to assist us in a, I hate to overuse it, a robust outreach program.
Fantastic. And we welcome that.
And so anyway, we, as council people with our different districts, can partner, can help, so we can call a meeting and...
Absolutely.
You know, something like that?
We'll put the plan together and bring it back to you.
Okay. Thank you.
That would be great. And using as many modes of communication as possible, both online, making sure documents are available in the library for people to review if they can't come out to a meeting, that's worked well in the past. As many methods of communication as possible. And having an adopted budget that can help us with our advertising this time will certainly help. Moving our meetings to the winter, spring, I hope will help. We had some conflicts with fall activities on a Monday night or a Thursday night. That was particularly challenging. With regard to energy and solid waste management, the environmental stewardship framework of the comprehensive plan, if you give it a look today, is a very robust section. It includes sections on each of those topics, including, you know, energy and solid waste management. I don't have it in my outline. So we are intending to keep those elements in the plan and to update them as necessary. But yes, energy has been quite a current topic, and we have a number of internal and external committees working around that topic.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Barbara, did you have something to add with that?
Yeah, I mean, well, I guess it's my frustration. And I guess I might as well just be blunt. You know, with all we have gone...
Not the lady from Princess Anne.
Yeah. With all...
New policy.
New policy.
Yeah. With all that we have gone through, you know, on the light rail issue. And, you know, we say that the public wants, you know, multimodal transportation, da-da-da-da, those things. But we were hearing an awful lot of negatives. So somehow or other, it seems to me we need to be doing those conversations with the public now, so we know, I mean, if we wait until next May, we're going to be pretty far along the line on the next decision for that. Somehow or other, this discussion needs to come now, right now. Because we've really got to find out whether this is truly what we're, what the public wants and is going to support. You know, I don't think we can sit back on this issue too much longer because this train is leaving the station one way or the other, or not leaving the station. We've really got to know this. And, you know, because I wasn't hearing in those public hearings that we were having on the light rail issue, I mean, it seemed that people were surprised that we thought it was an economic development thing. were surprised that we thought it was an economic development thing, or, and it was people that it was a surprise that we were going to be doing the strategic growth areas. I'm just, somewhere or other, we've lost the public in here. I don't know. We've got to get in there.
Jamie?
Well, piggybacking on that, when you're talking with the folks and they say that transportation and transit are the priorities, are we deep diving five questions in and asking them what types of multimodal and transportation that they're, that they want? I mean, are we diving into that and getting more clarification? Because that's a broad kind of statement there.
I've just, go back to that slide. It's reflected what we heard.
Slide seven.
These were the things that we heard under transportation in terms of what was important to people to be addressing, congestion, more mode choices, including better public transit, bikeways, and trails, walking, or what we call active transportation, very important to people as well.
One more question on the slide prior to that, just, is that the order, the ranking order of importance that they came, or is it just kind of a random order there? Is transportation environmental?
Transportation environmental stewardship rose to the top, and then these were the other things that we heard repeated most frequently. We had people putting Post-it notes under each chapter of the plan in terms of what was important. We actually had a board that said, what's the most important thing to you to be improved over the next 20 years, so, and on the public survey. Same questions we asked on the virtual town hall survey were used at the open houses.
Just curious, because I'm hearing jobs all the time, and that coming in under environmental stewardship and others, I just was surprised with that, if that was the true ranking. Thank you.
I did want to ask.
See, I knew you did.
You did. And Barbara sort of raised this, too, that I've got some concern over the May timeframe with the budget. I mean, last year's budget was...
Well, maybe we could...
Really, it took a lot of our energy. I guess that's the best way to put it. It took a whole lot of our energy, and this is important, and it sort of seems all becoming at the same time, and it just seems like two really major things all at once.
Maybe we can, go ahead.
Yeah, well, that's why I kind of alluded before, when we were having our discussions, you know, Jermaine to finding a city manager, is also maybe, you know, take the opportunity early on to tap into, you know, the attitudes and perceptions of, you know, the public about where they want the leadership of the city, you know, the council manager form of government, to take them over the next couple of years, you know, guiding them through some tough economic times, but also, you know, assurances that we're able to deliver those key services and everything, you know, as we're going forward. And, you know, so this could be the opportunity to at least have a preliminary discussion, you know, to get things rolling, because I share Rosemary's concern, that, you know, we just can't wait for an information dump in May, right around the budget time. If we get, you know, a process even starting right after Labor Day, where we can start tapping into it, you know, it just makes sense to me.
Good. Other comments before I make a few? Okay.
Carol's going to shoot me, but we will commit to a presentation on the draft plan to you in December.
Yep, I've got a few thoughts to add to that, okay? All right.
Sorry, Carol.
Okay, first of all, you know, this is not to be adversely critical. This is, you know, thinking ahead and out loud with y'all, if I may, that's what this person, this meeting is. But I sit back, and I do know the process of having these meetings, and you get a handful of people at them. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong. And I think, to me, that the comprehensive plan is also very much tied to what Jim Forrest's presentation was a few weeks ago, about the way this economy's going in our city and our region and so forth. And for instance, I just said, what are we doing about bioscience? You know, I don't know, I haven't seen anything. You follow where I'm coming from? What are we doing? Where I do believe we, you know, have some wonderful opportunities in the ITA for things that will help what Jim brought to our attention, that we need, we got to do some things differently. And that does lead me to out-of-the-box, the virtual tour, 30-some people, right? Answers, and that's what we thought was going to be a huge way to reach people, if you recall. I think we really got to get out of the box as far as finding out how to get more input from the public. And I'm going to task, I guess, all of y'all to get that done. And I'm also going to task you that we get this done before May. And I think that, I don't need an answer now, but let's see what we come back together with, and see if we can get that information done in a more timely manner. I'll make it clear to you, we want it done right now. And I'm willing, you know, we don't want to push something that hadn't had the proper input from the public. But at the same time, you know, when I sit back and I see the sea level rise, I mean, my goodness, that's going to be a huge part of this plan, I would think. Barbara and I've had, Barbara and I've had some very informal conversation about where's ARP coming, perhaps helping with that, you know, dealing with that in some of the areas in her part of the city, can we look at ARP a bit differently? But we got to get on with this. We got to get on with this. And I don't want to put anyone under intense pressure, but I guess we live under intense pressure every day.
I think, I think, Mayor, the first part of your comments, specifically, that's why we added this chapter on economic vitality, because that's going to be a big driver, certainly in the 20-year period that we're talking about. And then the schedule comments, I'm sure Dee will get back to the Plan Commission, they're the ones that are actually charged by the statute of preparing this for your consideration, so.
Well, Dee, get a mood.
Look, fast, I can't, well, I'm going to leave here and get on it.
Rosemary.
You know, I'm just thinking, I'm wondering, how many people do we have on all of our boards and commissions?
There's over 300.
There's 300 people right there that ought to have, I mean, they're all major stakeholders. And if somehow we could engage those 300 people to each one try to engage...
Well, maybe planning goes to one of their meetings, you know? I mean, I don't know, I'm thinking, that's a great thought.
They did to most of them in the very, I mean, a year ago, in that preliminary part. So that's been done with, I know, some of the boards and commissions that I've liaised on with. So that's been, you know, that box has been checked. So, you know, how many times did we check a box?
Well, and also, you know, maybe what we're, as long as we're trying to do the right thing, I think is the key thing. And if we're not getting the results that are desired, so be it, but I think we should make every effort to try to get those results. That's where I'm coming from.
And also to be more emphatic of how important this is, and to reach out to these people and ask them if they could also reach out to some people to really give us some input.
The best presentation that's been made to this council in a long time is what Jim did a few weeks ago. And I looked at that presentation not as a doom and gloom, but a way to say, this is the situation we're dealt with, you know, how are we going to deal with it? And I really believe that the way we deal with this comprehensive plan is going to have to be a part of that. I mean, I could be totally wrong, but you're agreeing with me. Hot dog, every now and then. Barbara, then, Louis.
Well, I used the data from that presentation at my district forum this past month, and also speaking to a group that I spoke to. And I just felt like that information that he gave us was, is just so critical for us to get out to our people. But what people have missed is tying together our need to work on this economic development with our planning policies that we're doing, particularly with the strategic growth areas. I mean, it's missed. I mean, when I read some of the letters to the editor in response to the fact that, you know, Armada Hoffler had purchased that property at Town Center, they were negative. And that was a good thing, I thought. We somehow or other not communicated, you know, our jobs policies and how it relates to planning and all of these other decisions that are really rolled together. And I don't think we can wait several months to start getting out there. I mean, I've already tried it twice. I didn't do too well necessarily, but it was a beginning.
Well, great, Louis.
To pick up on what Barbara said and the point that Rosemary made earlier, and that is, you know, in order to achieve what Barbara is describing, and I agree with her, we need this plan to counsel by December. Because in the January retreat, that's where we're going to be setting priorities for the city. And the priorities that we set in the January retreat are going to determine to a large extent where we spend the money in the next budget. So I just feel very strongly that the council needs to have its input into this plan before it hits the public, so that we can make sure that there's not something in there that we don't agree with.
So it kind of goes back with me suggesting changing the schedule. And just get back to us on what we think we can do. And we certainly do thank you.
Thank you.
I'm really pleased that the council cares about the comprehensive plan.
But I think we always have, and I think, I think we've been doing some good planning the last 24 years, okay?
We have.
That 24 number keeps coming up, doesn't it?
Yeah, 24 number. I'd like to do it for 25, if you don't mind.
That's great. I think the council has to...
After 25, I really don't care. Just kidding. All right, okay. We got to go through here. The next one is the neighborhood dredging program.
Yes, sir. We wanted to give you an update. Dave Hansen is here to...
Now, let me backtrack a little bit. You know, I don't want the planning department to feel that that was us, you know, we're very proud of the work, but I think what you just said, we really do care about it, and we do have milestones down the road where decisions have to be made, and we do count on that input that has been prepared to help us make the right decisions.
No, I think that's all...
I just don't want anyone to think we're trying to be...
No, I know.
Okay, all right.
Dave is here to give you kind of an update on where we are in the dredging program. There is one specific question that we're going to pose by, at the end of the briefing, that we need some direction on in terms of the issue of, we have new people coming into the community, buying properties and so on and so forth. If an SSD is established for a dredging project, should there be a mechanism to allow new people to join if they want to join the program voluntarily? So that's kind of the end first.
All right, Dave. Thanks, Jim. We're going to start with an update. Been a while since I've been before you, and let you know how we're progressing. Kind of pleased to say I think we're about to merge from the crawl stage to the walking stage of this program's evolution. So things are working steadily towards a common understanding with all the federal agencies and the state regulatory agencies, and then keeping the neighbors informed. And you can never go fast enough to get this kind of end product in place, but today we're going to just reinforce your goal number four, that's to revitalize our neighborhoods and plan for the future, reestablish our navigable channels, and then improve our water quality. You've seen this chart before, virtually every time we brief you, it just reestablishes and restates the funding strategy that we have. We have three legs of funding. We have an SSD, a real estate tax on those waterfront property owners that receive a benefit. We use some general funds to do the connecting, the Nexus Channel, between our eastern/wester branch channels and the entrance into the neighborhoods. And then we have the private access channels that are individually funded by the homeowners. And we've added just a clarification on when the rate reviews are, and that's in the fourth, eighth, and 12th years of the 16-year program, which sunsets. Here's the summary. We've evaluated 28 of these neighborhood projects. 13 have been petitioned, seven were adopted, four failed, and two are still in the petition phase. And of those seven that have been approved, five are still in design and two are under construction. You've seen that chart, we kind of color-coded it. We've added a new indicator, UC, under construction, and that's the, what we call the two Pathfinder projects. Both of them are in the Bayside District, in the Rosemary's district there, and we're actually dredging in one, and we've awarded the second, and we'll talk about what those are. The green means you've appropriated, you've appropriated funds through an ordinance established in the SSD. The two blues are, of course, are under petition. The rest are working, and the failed ones are in red on the right. Fairly busy chart, but helps you find your way on the river when you're out there and looking at projects, and everybody has a name, so we kind of get those, all those codes reestablished. And then on the right, you can see the Rudy Inlet to Project Shadow Lawn and Harbor Point. And here's where the Whitehurst Depository Pit is for the dredge material off of Oceana. Our project delivery team, I don't think we've ever shown you this, just so you know who the players are in making this happen. And Public Works Engineering has a significant portion, as project management resides with them, but we couldn't do anything without a battery of attorneys that Mark provides, and sometimes Mark himself, from real estate, with Rebecca being a part of our team, and Dana doing the finances, and sometimes even Alex Stiles gets involved in some of the discussions we have. Real estate, a big, important player, as we look at each one of these differently, because it seems like the bottom lands are different everywhere we go. Finance, maintaining the records of where the money is and the escrows that go along with taking in private funding, and then, of course, the management services and budget responsibility to program this. We've added a second AE firm waterway surveys, and we're probably going to RFP in 2016 for a third AE firm to join us, so that we have sufficient folks out there working the actual project engineering and working with the neighborhoods. And then, I'm really pleased to say that the Army Corps of Engineers has come a long way in understanding the program. There's been a conscious decision on their commander's part to understand that, and that continues with the new commander. We've already had several meetings with him, and he seems to be open-minded with regards to helping us. DEQ is always out there, but they seem to respect the decisions that the Corps is making, and they sometimes default to them. And of course, everything on a joint permit app goes through VMRC. To date, we have not had to take a project before the local wetlands board. So Old Donation Creek, it's 66 properties in upper left-hand corner. You see it's 18.4 cents. We're currently dredging, as part of that project, the Western Branch Lynn Haven River. You can see when the NTP was, were underway. We'll probably enter Old Donation's SSD in the November timeframe and be removing mud there. That means we will have gotten the Western Branch dredging out of the way, which is a critical thoroughfare that we have a legal responsibility to maintain, is our navigable waterway system. And hopefully, we'll finish April of next year. Carolina Marine Structures is a contractor, that's a reformatted company, used to be here in Virginia. They saw the light of doing business well, and we're very pleased with their progress. We are using, we are using a system of mounted cameras on time-lapse to observe the contractor and the performance of his duty while he's out there operating, to make sure there's no sidecasting. And of course, we pay based on accurate surveys of mud removed. That mud removed moves to Whitehurst Pit. Never really shown you what it looks like out there off Oceana. If you ever went out there and looked at it, it's an old borrow pit, and we've built a wharf facility, so those big dump trucks can back up safely and dump in there, and we can move the mud around. But we have a lot of capacity, but that doesn't mean that it's enough to do everything we intend to do over the next 10, 15 decades of work here, to include the deposition of our lake management program, our 400 wet ponds, lakes, and channels, canals. And the second project is Bayville Creek, 12 properties, upper reach. You can see where that's located, off the Western Branch, and that's 36.3 cents. The NTP went out the beginning of August, and we will begin constructing a temporary pier, a transfer pier, inside Church Point, and we'll be taking the mud out through the local streets of Church Point and across the Lesnar and to the Whitehurst Pit. We're going to see how much, how well that's going to go. We've had long discussions with the group about the need for public dredge transfer sites. sites, but we all agreed that we would, those that, neighborhoods that the roads surface and subsurface would support the trucks to move out of their neighborhoods, we'd take it out through there. So, uh, that should be an interesting occasion. We'll be, we'll be executing some very strong traffic control on those trucks, but if what we're seeing with Carolina Marine, um, those truck drivers are being very responsive. They're watching, they're using all the safety aspects. They're not dropping mud on the road. It's, it's been a very clean operation, and we expect the same when, when this new contractor docks on the bay who came out of Richmond and reestablished a business here and hired a bunch of locals and put a lot of equipment to work on our bay. So, we're seeing new contractors compete against the older guys on the bay and sharpen their pencils and giving us decent prices to do this work. So, let's move forward. You can see there's Shadow Lawn. We've got 31 properties and almost 16 cents, 15.9. And we've got, uh, the joint permit app submitted, and we're hoping to move to advertisement before the end of this current year. Harbor Point is a second Rudy inlet along with Shadow Lawn. Both them will be done through hydraulic dredging and depositions into the Lake Rudy Pit, Lake Rudy's deep area that's bona fide, approved, Corps of Engineer permitted deposition area. And, uh, they have really three areas. They've got off of our Rudy Channel here, and then you can see, here's a blow-up of what it looks like there. All the condos have boat slips there, and each one of them are paying a portion, an equal portion of the SSD. And that's why they got it down, because that's a pretty intense contribution coming from that one condominium complex. It's got a marina there. Chesapeake Colony is our largest approved to date with 131, and, uh, we are hoping to submit that joint permit application within probably two months, within the next two months. And, uh, that's, that's taken a lot of review from Rebecca and the city attorney, as well as our real estate, to get us through that, not to mention the individual meetings that our AE has to do with all these homeowners on their waterfront. Gill's Cove, much smaller, 21 properties and 6.3. Herd's Cove is 91 properties on the Eastern Branch. Eastern Branch is this, is this kind of grayish channel that we maintain over there, and that, of course, is in Jim Woods Lynn Haven District, 43.8 cents. You can see the amount of green SSD channels there. That's a lot of dredging, and that's why the expense is there. But they are really, uh, they really do live on mud flat. And so, this is a great opportunity to remove a foreign substance to the Lynn Haven caused by stormwater runoff. It's composed of silt and fines and really sub-aquatic vegetation cannot grow on this stuff. So, it's an opportunity to remove that and get down to a better bottom. Little Neck's, a smaller project, but having less number of, in larger parcels, it's more costly, but they're approved. And, uh, let me just bring reference here. They have been in this process since October, end of October last year, and they have not reached their 80%. And we're getting real close to having to pull the plug on them if they don't come across. Uh, I don't know. I, let me see if I can squint. It's not clear enough to me. It's, uh, I'll get you that answer. You kind of look at these projects a little differently. You look at the shape of the cove and, and, and the waterfront properties. This is going to become our largest one. This is at the very top of Little Neck. And, uh, you, you know, if we had the Lynn Haven Boat Ramp at Crab Creek operation, we didn't have a Lesnar Bridge being there, we'd probably be taking the mud straight up and out through that, that transfer site and bringing it across the Lesnar. But because the bridge is using that for construction, we're looking at bringing this out through the neighborhood and down through the middle of Little Neck and out onto Virginia Beach Boulevard. So, that should be high adventure working through those details. They're excited to go. They really feel like they've got 80%. That's a lot of promise to bring 145, but these have been up there, very, very steep banks, uh, but very, very low at low tide. Can't move any kind of boats in and out of that area there. So, they'll, they'll benefit greatly from the project. So, the Paul Hulawas lately shot.
Right. Just do this, Dave, before you-
Sure, of course.
This is an update of where we stand. Of the two projects that we've let, how did they, how did the actual contracts come in compared to what we had a budgeted for those?
Yeah, we're-
Pretty close.
Right, right. And, and part of this discussion and talking about additional policies there is, is just to, to explain to you all the, the cost projections that we use. It's, it's a guess. I mean, we are using industry standards. We're guessing what the volumes are in some cases, because we're using a survey that the neighborhood brought to us, and we go out there down the road when we're actually funded to do the work, and we find out that the survey is reasonably accurate or in some cases not reasonably accurate. And so, you know, holy cow, do, do we think we've got enough to make this work, and we're counting on more competition on the river to offset those costs? So, until we open a bid, we really don't know these accuracies.
If I ask the question, but we're-
But the, but the answer is, we have several bidders in the game. We have several other companies that are really missed their, missed their mark on these, and we think the competition will continue to bring those prices down as we bring more projects online, because they'll stay, they'll stay employed, and they'll be able to move around, and they'll only be able to bid on the ones they know they can do, because they, certain amount of equipment that they got to have to be able to do it. The issue here is, we're, we've had numerous requests to, to rejoin, to join into SSDs that we've already had. And, uh, we've also had neighborhood leadership that's asking the question, that they're being asked by people at the end of coves who opted out or decided not to, and we cut off the channel, and there's an additional four houses down there, and now a couple of them on the end that joined the, the SSD, want to get back into the SSD or just want to get into the SSD. And so, um, the difficulty of, of bringing new members into the SSD is compounded if, after the first dredging, the house sells, and the new owner says, "I really want to get in." And they're legitimate, they're legitimate requests, and as you try to determine ways to embrace them coming into the neighborhood and revitalizing the neighborhoods, it becomes a, it becomes a fine dance between what legally we're allowed to do with regards to ordinances that are in place that establish a rate based on a certain quantity, and being able to revitalize neighborhoods, because these people are at the end of the coves. These are the most tidally restricted, non-navigable areas of waterfront property we have. I'm sure Rosemary, I look at you as our real estate guru, but you know they're the most dilapidated homes that we have on the waterfront. And those dilapidated homes at the end of the coves are probably the, the greatest intersections with the rest of the neighborhoods. And so, as they go, so goes some of the neighborhoods and the whole demeanor of, of a neighborhood spiraling down as opposed to bringing itself up. So, bringing in those end-of-the-cove homes, it's a significant endeavor to meet our fourth goal of revitalizing neighborhoods. Here's a, here's a list of pros, and here's a list of cons that you may want to look at with regards to the contemplating this. The sale of houses will occur. I think most people that come to our public meetings have some neighbor that's in the real estate business, and to, to every meeting I've been to, they stand up and they talk about, "This is real, and it really has an effect on the property values of the houses on the waterfront and the houses that are across the street." Some, some neighbors that were opposed to it in the beginning are seeing the value of it, because they were skeptical that the government could pull a system off and make a program work, and, well, they're seeing it start to become reality, and they don't want to miss that boat. Or their kids are saying, "Look, if you're going to leave me this house, you got to dredge the channel, or it's going to be a terrible situation for me." We think that, uh, there will be some effort at the end of those coves to say, "All right, you go ahead and do the SSD and pay all that money. I'm just going to get a dredge to come in here and do my little piece, and then a free load up and down the channel that's for public. It's a public channel. You can go back and forth." Most of us know to mobilize a dredge, to do all the engineering, get the permits and everything, it's a significant expenditure. So, we need to make it cost, cost favorable for them to join the SSD. Environmental benefits. One of the most important aspects of dredging, and why we say water, is the flushing action that goes on in those canals and the fact that the fish and the fauna do return where we found sandy bottoms. We've been able to bring habitat to a much higher state in areas that have now had that dredging, and that is evidenced throughout the Lynn Haven, where people have taken on dredging projects and turned their waterways from a mud flat into navigable channels. Reduce the sediment load. We know that, um, and Senator Frank Williams took me to task and said, "Look, Dave, we got to get to where those outfalls are depositing all this muck and all this sand at the end of, of, of the coves, and we got to figure a way to go in there." And I explained to the senator how difficult it is for us to get permits to go in there, because many of those places have vegetated wetlands growing up, because the sediment's deposited in there. But we know that removing that sediment and being able to calculate the quantities of phosphorus and the quantities of nitrogen that are contained in that material is also enabling us to potentially ask for credit for that, as opposed to when we reach back to our 2009 storm water quality and our VSMPT MDL requirements. And finally, pushing back the coves attacks the sediment from the outfalls and allows the private money to be invested to support their, their profitability and their home ownership, as opposed to using our wetlands fees, our correction, our stormwater fees to, to do that work. Nothing's easy in this business, formulating decisions about our SSD and our taxation program and the commitments we make to those that we already have a tax on the ground. So, we've got to find a way that, first of all, we remain within the legal bodies of the appropriation that's out there, and that we, if and when we change district boundaries and rates, it's probably going to require a revision to the ordinance that you've already passed. Accounting administrative aspects, believe me, I get, I get challenged by both management services and budgeting and finance with regards to that. And then, I told you about the complexity. It's probably easier before the first dredging. It'll be more difficult to do it after the second. So, we provided, use some alternatives to consider. The first one, contrary to some course of action analysis, is not a throwaway. It's actually the one that we're recommending on the next chart. And we believe that, uh, we, we have some duty to be responsible to those members of the SSD that already exist, and therefore, what we are recommending is that we allow them additions to come in, provided they are contingent to the current SSD, and that they have a one-time buy-in. And it's based on a mathematical formula to the amount of volume that they're adding to the project associated with bringing their waterfront property to bear timesum percentage of 1.0 less than, because that sloughing action of that mud in their property will move into the SSD and will be, have to be picked up by the SSD membership, and he'll, that person, that owner will be helping with his costs. Alternative two is just to say, "Look, as Hansen said earlier, it's a guess. We, we think we know what diesel costs are. We think we know what labor costs are. We think we know what the bidding process will do. We think we know what the care and maintenance and the navigation aids and operating costs associated is. And so, we put a swag on there and say it's going to be $32.50 a cubic yard, and we open up the bids, and it's $33.10." Well, that's why we had, and I brought to your reference in the beginning chart, we have rate, rate review on the fourth, the eighth, and the 12th years to reset, because we have better fidelity, we have better surveys, and we'll hone in on that. And by the time we do get to our third and final dredging, that which you loaned in the beginning for the first dredging will be paid back and fully funded by them in the third dredging, and somewhere in the middle of the second dredging will probably cross paths between our dollars and their dollars. Alternative three is just say, "All right, let's put it out to all those members of the SSD to vote on it. We know how hard it is to get 80%. I don't, I would not recommend that. It would be extremely difficult. I don't think the person would ever get an answer, and we just catapult him to go do it yourself." And that may not help the restoration of the neighborhood. And then finally, establish an independent SSD on the end of the original SSD, but that's going to be an insurmountable cost, and he'll probably say, "Well, rather than do that, I'll just pay to get it done if, if they have the wherewithal to do it." So, this is our recommendation. Allow the staff to draft an ordinance and work through all the conversations with the city attorney and, and what we've got currently in law. As with all ordinances, we'll have a public hearing for the program change, and then move forward with alternative one, which is to calculate and then put some formula together that allows people to know what the costs will be based on their volumetric amounts, and, and get them into the neighborhoods, because nothing's fixed, nothing's static. It'll continue to be an emerging environment, and people will want to live in these neighborhoods and be a part of these coves that have been dredged out and are no longer mud flats going forward. Subject to your questions.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
I just want to thank Dave for his tenacity on these projects and, and this, this, this plan and so forth. It's, uh, it's been a long, hard haul for him. He's worked hard. Jim and I in particular can remember going to one of his first Civic League, uh, presentations, and, and you've just done a great job, you and Phil, the two Phils, and, and just get this thing off the ground. And just one more comment, success breeds success.
That's right.
And that's why you're having these people want to come in now that didn't want, that weren't willing before. They're seeing that it's going to be a successful program, and so now they want to be a part of it. And I think we should do what you're suggesting and, and make it possible for them to come in, because the more people get into the program, the cleaner the river will be, the higher the property values will be. It will be a success, even more of a success because of it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim Wood.
Yeah, Dave, what is going out of the Thalia Dredge Transfer Station now? What project is that?
That's the Western Branch dredging. It's, uh, it's been in process a couple of months now, and they've made good progress. They're actually probably up to Steinheblers. They're getting really close to being adjacent to Steinheblers right now.
Well, what I, what I tell the council is, because my office is over there, I see the trucks going out, and it's not the Armageddon that people were worried about with, you know, trucks non-stop going through. I mean, it's, it's very well managed. Um, you know, it's, I don't know, maybe one truck an hour, if, if that, and, and they're coming out. They've got extremely good traffic control. They've got people out there with the vests and the flags and everything, and they're, they're actually interacting with EMS right there at the intersection, and that they, but they do a really good job, and I'm, I'm really impressed with that. And I would echo what the vice mayor said. It's, it's definitely a very successful program, and I, I don't have any doubt that there's going to be more and more people that want to jump in on it.
Thank you. Laura.
Uh, this proposal, you're talking about allowing an individual to come in, not an additional whole cove where you have to go back to the 80%? And you're talking about individuals coming into the SSD or multiple people?
Well, um, I mentioned, I mentioned that there was the potential where, originally focused on individuals, but as in the case of Chesapeake Colony, where we excluded a little indent of cove where maybe there's six homes in there and four people were no, that cove was excluded from the SSD. So, if that cove wants to come back in and they're 100% into it, we can do the calculation to support that. We'll probably cross that bridge when it actually comes to us.
As a case-by-case-
Absolutely, ma'am.
Do you have any other questions or comments? Dave, we thank you again for-
And thank you very much.
Now, we've got another good job coming. Thank you, Cooper. She's on a good job, too. She's on a good job, too. Thank you, we're glad to have you.
Thank you for having me. So I am here this afternoon to give you first a background on where we have been with BRAC and then at the end to look forward to where we're going because this marks the first year where we're drastically reduced in funding and we're gonna be looking at some different ways that we're gonna be handling things from now on. So first, just to give you some background, because I know a lot of you were here, but some of you were not here 10 years ago when the BRAC order came out. This August, it'll be 10 years since that BRAC order. In the summer of 2005, Oceana was added to the BRAC order, to the list that the BRAC Commission was reviewing. Resulting from that was a BRAC order that put the City of Virginia Beach, the State of Virginia, and the City of Chesapeake to terms that said if we didn't accomplish all of these terms by a certain date, then Oceana would be, or the East Coast Master Jet Base would leave Oceana and would go to Cecil Field in Florida. So the impact of this move would have been devastating. There were financial reports that were, studies that were done. And as I recall, the general impact would be that we were at risk of being thrown into about a 15-year recession. And that was before we had a market downturn. It would have been significant, not just for the city, but for the state and the region as well. The BRAC order that had those conditions had one major one that gave us the most concern. Most of them came out of our JLU study that had been, that had occurred in earlier of 2005. But the one that we were surprised the most by was a requirement that we condemn and purchase all of the incompatible use property in the accident potential zone one areas and to fund that at no less than $15 million per year. And that was a shock because we had not intended to exercise eminent domain. And there were a lot of people who did not want to have their homes condemned. And those who were on council at the time will remember, people flooded the council chambers saying, "Do not take our homes." They were desperate that they did not want to leave. And they came in wearing T-shirts and holding banners. And council at that time, you knew you had to listen and you had to do something, but it was not gonna be condemn and purchase $15 million per year. We also did some studies to determine what that would accomplish. And we concluded that if we changed nothing else and condemned $15 million per year every year, we might be making some headway in one location, but without any zoning changes, somebody else with buy right development would be undoing everything that we're doing somewhere else in those areas. So we would have done that and not really made any headway. So there was a plan created that we needed to do that was to come up with a way to meet the requirements of the BRAC order, but respect, respect the property rights of the individuals who didn't wanna have their homes purchased and who lived in the neighborhoods that preexisted the base. So we looked at all of the tools in the toolbox, not just the condemn and purchase tool that was in the BRAC order, and we came up with this plan. And our former city attorney, Les Lilly, used to call it threading the needle because it was a very difficult problem that we had to achieve. And we had to find a way to reduce the encroachment at the same time honoring the neighborhoods who were there and thin them without ruining them. So we created a three-part plan that has three components to it. A zoning component, an acquisition component, and then a rollback component. So just to familiarize, refamiliarize you, I know you have all seen this map before. This is the AQ's map overlaid over the City of Virginia Beach. And the areas that the BRAC order was concerned with were the pink areas, the accident potential zone one. They didn't mention the clear zone areas at all, which this council added because that was an obvious oversight. There were still some, there's some development still in the, in the clear zones. The other areas on the map are, of course, the interfacility traffic area, which is the area between Oceana and Centers Field in Chesapeake. And the rural AQ's area, which is the area where the noise zone overlaps the area below the green line. And then, of course, the, the noise zones, 65 to 70 in orange, 70 to 75 in yellow, and greater than 75 in, oh, sorry, I just said that backwards. It is backwards. So the three-part plan has a number of components to it. The first and foremost that is of critical importance is the land use plan. The APZ-1 ordinance that was adopted in 2005, I'm gonna go into it in a little more detail, but basically it froze all incompatible development. Nothing new would be allowed to come in. Some other elements were the AQ's overlay ordinance, which I'll get into. We also established an MOU with the Navy where we go over all of the potential developments in the city with the Navy to make sure they're compatible with the plan before you even see them. And a number of other things in the noise attenuation and that sort of thing. The second part was the acquisition plan, which really isn't, for all the attention it gets because of the money that's spent, it's not the driving force. It's really there to address what we're doing to the property rights with the first part of the plan, the zoning. And I'll go into the two parts of the acquisition plan as well, the APZ-1 and the ITA, and let you know what we've been doing in those in the, since we've been buying property. And then the third part is the rollback plan, which is the Oceana Land Use Conformity Program. And basically, what that plan does is it leverages private funds so that we can get the private sector to help us achieve our goals. So part one, the land use controls. The APZ-1 Clear Zone Ordinance was adopted in December, on December 20th of 2005. And what it did was it prohibited all new uses in APZ-1 that were not compatible. And it applies to all new development, whether you could have pulled a building permit the day before, you're not allowed to do it if you hadn't already done so by that date. Existing uses are grandfathered, so if you had something that was already built, it could definitely stay. But if you hadn't gotten to a certain point where you had a vested development yet, you could not build it. The application of this ordinance essentially resulted in a taking of property. And this was where we felt like we actually had met that BRAC order challenge of condemn and purchase because by taking, say, a residential zoned lot and preventing any residential use on it, you have devalued that site almost entirely. And we knew that we had done that. And so the purpose of the acquisition plan is to make good on that and to be able to find a way to compensate them, the property owners, by saying, "We're gonna buy that property from you." And that was the genesis of the acquisition component right there, was those vacant residential or vacant incompatible lots. So as a result, we created the acquisition plan to address that. So the APZ-1 ordinance restriction, if you have an existing house, it can stay. If you want to make it larger, you can do that. But you cannot add any new units or any new households. So new development must be compatible. A new house on a residential lot is just not gonna be permitted. A new bakery on a B2 commercial lot is not gonna be permitted because those are not compatible with what the Navy would want to see in APZ-1. You, converting an existing home to a duplex on a duplex zone lot is also not allowed because that would be adding a new unit. And expanding an existing retail business is not allowed because you're expanding what is now a non-conforming use. So a 50-seat restaurant cannot be expanded to a 100-seat restaurant. So it's very limited what you can do in APZ-1. Light manufacturing and operations, trade, basic services such as warehousing, repair, construction. No retail, no residential. On the effect of those zoning components of part one of the zoning component of this program was to immediately prevent about 1,300 potential incompatible uses in APZ-1 overnight. And the ordinance, because of that alone, would be more successful than if we had done 30 years of condemning and purchasing existing businesses over time. The AQ's overlay ordinance is another part and a very important part of this program. And what it does is it says, "In all of those noise zones, you have to either have your existing zoning for what you wanna do or it has to be compatible. You can't come to council for a discretionary action to change it to something incompatible." So it lets the zoning be the guide. So the council is not going to be asked to take a residential property or a, a commercial property and turn it into a nonconforming residential. So in a B2 commercial lot, for example, if you went to the zoning code, you would see that a bakery is a permitted use. So that would be fine. You could build a new one of those if it didn't exist already because no discretionary action is needed from council. If you request to rezone a B2 commercial lot to R10 to develop residential, that will not be allowed. And the MOU committee, it's now called the Joint Review Committee, would catch that and would prevent it from even coming to council. So next to the, the acquisition component. So as I said, it's intended to complement the APZ-1 ordinance because of all the properties that we significantly devalued and affected. It was adopted on the same day, December 20th, 2005, and our implementation began January 1, 2007. And the reason for the delay is because we had to wait and see, we, we did not meet the DOD Inspector General's checkbox of having met all of the terms because we did not have an outright condemning element. So it then went to Jacksonville, Florida, and we had to wait for, to see if they defaulted, and they did. So once we got word that they were, the base was gonna be staying, we immediately began buying property in fiscal year 2007. So the properties that we have been acquiring over all this time, it started with those vacant residential lots. And then before we even adopted the program, people who were in these neighborhoods came to council and said, "But I have a single-family home, but I, it's on a duplex lot, and I'm not allowed to do that anymore. You need to buy my property, too." And it was a very compelling argument. There were some people who said, "This was gonna be my retirement income. You know, I was planning, I bought this house with the intention of adding a new unit as soon as my kids were gone, and now I can't do that anymore." So we start, the third bullet there is, single-family homes on a duplex zone lot or otherwise undeveloped, underdeveloped property is a qualifying purchase in, in this program. We've also added developed duplexes because there were a number of developers, especially in the market boom before the crash, where people were going and buying these old duplex lots and putting up huge ones. So it might have been an old one built in the 1960s, and then they were building new two-unit condos. So we thought, "Well, we can buy those and tear them down and maybe put one back or assemble them with others." Commercial properties with frustrated business purposes. If somebody bought a piece of property to put up a retail center and they can't do that anymore, we would consider that for purchase. Properties vested for nonconforming uses. We purchased a number of those. We figured out all the ones that were vested but not built, prevent them from going in. And we got as many of those as we could. And incompatible uses in transportation corridors. So even if they weren't, if it was a single-family house, but we knew one day it was coming down, we were gonna buy it with this program, so in the southeastern Parkway.
This, this frustrated business, is that what happened to Forbes Candy and Japanese Auto Masters there on London Bridge Road?
Not exactly. That was actually because of a Navy easement. And, and they were, they were surprisingly outside of APZ-1, I believe. So that, it was, the Navy had already purchased an easement, and so that was not compatible under the easement document, not under the APZ-1 rules. So where we are today is, we have spent or committed to spend on agreements to purchase $85 million of property, actually more than that. We have purchased about 401 parcels in APZ-1, and we have reduced in that area 697 potential units and 55 incompatible businesses. And this has been city and state-funded 50/50. This is a map that shows, the purple areas are the APZ-1. And you can see the little red dots all up at the top. This is how we've had to spend that $85 million. This is not in big chunks of land in APZ-1. This is in 5,000 square foot lots, 10,000 square foot lots. Occasionally, one that's bigger, the big red block there is the London Bridge Commerce Center. And at the very tip of the second trapezoid there, which is the clear zone, that is this area, Oceana Boulevard, where it goes down, where it intersects, where Old First Colonial goes down to Potter's Road. This is what that area, which is just the tip of that trapezoid of the clear zone, looked like in December of 2008. There was a retail center that had a children's dance studio and a gun shop, I believe, and a restaurant. There were a number of, there were, there was a five, fiveplex, I don't know what you'd call it, but, not a duplex, but it was five units in one of these buildings down here. And there were a number of other duplexes in the area. By February of 2013, that's what it looked like. And we still have a couple that are still in there. And we still approach them every once in a while to see if they're willing to sell, but they're not. But this is one of the, where you can really see a big impact as to what we've been doing in that area. One of the other things that we're doing is trying to reduce the neighborhoods that are established residential neighborhoods by thinning them without ruining them. One of the other things that this body heard about was people saying, "Even if you have a voluntary program to buy homes, I don't wanna sell, and I don't want five houses on my street to be gone, and you're gonna force me out that way." They said, "You're gonna Swiss cheese our neighborhoods." So what we've been trying, trying to do is we've been trying to find a way to assemble properties and thin the neighborhoods so that, in a way that you wouldn't notice if you drove through today. So an example is 228 Middle Lane. It's now Lot A. It used to be three duplex lots right next to each other. In the before, we had a developed duplex and a single-family home on those three duplex lots. So you had the potential for six units at that location. We took both of those down and we sold it, and a new home went in. And that's just one remaining on all six of those lots. Another example here on Indiana Avenue, three single-family homes on three duplex lots. We re, we combined them into one, and we now have one. And if you can see up at the corner, that's where it is. You can see, there's now a lot more green space in the neighborhood where you used to have three homes right there, now you have one. So that's APZ-1. I'm gonna move over to the interfacility traffic area where we have been buying property in that flight path between the bases and in the rural AQ's area as well. This was an area that the Navy was very concerned about in the JLU's process. It was because this was largely undeveloped at that time. And so this was an opportunity to prevent development from going in. It's a lot more expensive to buy it once it's been in than to prevent it before something happens. Everything in red is what we've purchased. This is the ITA. The yellow is air, land that the city already owned before from the Lake Ridge property. It's the Prince of San Commons. It's the Virginia Beach National Golf Course. But all of that is 200, 2,266 acres of land in the ITA and the RIA that we have acquired at a cost of about $35.2 million. And again, this was 50/50 with the state for the most part. Right when we started, the city contributed about $3.5 million to the program initially. And then later, we were given the opportunity to spend that $15 million in this area as well, and that's when things really started taking off. So the, in the, in the ITA, we also have some Navy participation in the form of encroachment partnering. And what that means is, we have an agreement with the Navy where if we buy the property, everything you saw in red, then we can sell an easement to the Navy over that property. And in doing so, we're able to return money to the program and to the state. So to this, at this point, we have sold easements to the Navy at more than $11.5 million and covering about 1,525 acres. And then half of that money goes back to the state. And more than, so about $5.3 million has gone back to the Commonwealth at this point. And the Navy has expressed that they have about $5 million more for us to spend. And in fact, we're going to be coming before you next week with a, a new easement that's gonna be sold to the Navy. So the next time I give a presentation like this, this number would be going up. So next, the rollback. This is part three. This is the rollback plan. And what is, it is, is a series, we looked through the entire Virginia code to see what we could do to make progress through using private funds. We have property tax exemptions, BEPole tax rebates, site plan reimbursements for compatible We have property tax exemptions, B-Pole tax rebates, site plan reimbursements for compatible uses. All of these are designed to encourage people with compatible uses to come into APZ-1 or to encourage incompatible uses to relocate out of APZ-1. It is overseen by the OLUC, the Oceana Land Use Conformity Committee. So, to date, this is the summary of what we've been doing with all of that. You've already seen the numbers on the APZ-1 and the ITA and what we've been spending there. The conformity program and the expenses, we kind of jumbled together. The conformity program also has EDIP grants and that sort of thing. And then, the expenses are everything that we do for this entire program. So, everything from title appraisal, all those resubdivisions that we're doing in APZ-1, demolitions, which is a big cost, and all of that. So, the grand total of what we have spent on this program so far with the state has So, now, where we are in 2016 and beyond, so as we're going, we're in this fiscal year now, for the first eight years of the program, we were getting $15 million per year, half city, half state. Last year, it was less than that. The state just didn't fund as much as we had been having in prior years, and we had actually said to them, "After this many years of the program, our willing sellers are starting to wane." So, we had a $7.8 million program last year, and that was about 3.9, city, 3.9 state. In FY '16, this year, we are not getting any funding from the state. So, the city has funded it because we have ongoing obligations, and it's funded this year at $2.5 million. And I believe some of that is coming from the easement sales that we have done in the past. So, because this is down to about 16% of where we were in the past, we need to adjust what our procedures have been doing and start really ratcheting down what we're doing, but we need to do it in a thoughtful way. So, we plan with the zoning component to keep everything the same. From now, you know, all those are in place, they're working great, and in fact, they're being modeled by other localities. Chesapeake has adopted a lot of the same words, I mean, a lot of the same type ordinances. Hampton is looking at some of these as well. The APZ-1 ordinance is going to continue, the AQ's ordinance, and that Joint Review Process Committee is going to continue. For the acquisition component, this is going to be scaled back, of course, due to funding and also because we just don't have as many willing sellers. We have been going back to people year after year, and we had a little more of an upturn after the market started to rebound a little bit. There were some years in there where it actually was difficult to spend that $15 million. But we still have to keep some aspect of this, and that's because there are still some of those properties out there that are zoned for residential that you can't do anything with. So, we have to still honor that. And if somebody wants to sell one of those properties, there's money in the fund to buy it. We also have some other goals of the program that we just still want to accomplish. Those couple remaining in that area by Oceana would be great to get. The acquisition status in the ITA, we're almost to a point where we can declare success. You saw the map. There's not a lot left to buy. There are a couple more that, if they become available, we would certainly entertain them. But we're going to sit down with the Navy and just figure out when we can close the program in the ITA. Once we have accomplished everything that we reasonably can expect to accomplish, it will be closed. Acquisition in the APZ-1 and Clear Zone will continue on a limited basis to the extent that funds are available. But what we want to do is shift our process. So, you've been able to apply for this and indicate that you're a willing seller at any point in the year before. If we didn't catch you this year, we were going to catch you the next year. At this time, with $2.5 million, we've decided that we need to be able to have a fixed date where we can prioritize. So, we're going to be asking anybody who's a willing seller to let us know by October 31st, so that in the November, December timeframe, we can prioritize them and then make the purchases in the spring. All the properties proposed for acquisition will be evaluated based on the criteria on this slide. So, the effect of the APZ-1 ordinance, if we've taken all the value out of them, that's going to be a pretty high priority. Clearing the clear zones, if there's anything left and we have willing sellers in the clear zones, we would like to clear those out. The opportunity for achieving significant rollback, assemblage with other properties that we've acquired, we have a number of those little red dots that we want to do some more of what I showed you the slides on where we're thinning the neighborhood. Or the public need for the property, if it's needed for a road project or for some other public project, then that would also be given consideration. The rollback and incentives component is going to continue, also subject to scaled-back funding. OLUC currently meets quarterly. We may reduce that if we don't need to meet, but they will be involved in the ranking and the prioritizing of how we spend the funds. As for the incentives, all of the incentives will remain funded, although scaled back, this is not a particularly costly part of the program, except for EDIPs, which can depend, I mean, it depends on the private sector and who applies. So, and the EDIP grants are something that you may not know. By October 31st, we're actually going to set aside 10% of the funds each year as we have funding, so that we have some money to be ready to respond with. If there's some business that says, "I'm compatible, I want to come into APZ-1, but I need a grant," then we'll have some money there available for that. If we do completely defund the incentives in the future, we will need to give some lead time, because I think there are people who are counting on some of these things, B-Pole tax rebates, that sort of thing. The encroachment partnering with the state is, I mean, with the Navy is going to continue through September 30th, 2016, which is when our MYA, our multi-year agreement expires. It has been extended in the past, so if there are funds left and easements left to buy, then we could relook at extending it yet again. And any funds that are received by the city will be shared with the Commonwealth, of course. Disposition is something that we're now going to have to really start focusing on. We've acquired 401 parcels of land in APZ-1 and 2,266 acres in the ITA. Some of those parcels in the ITA have already been assembled and sold, but there's a lot that we may have to sell to adjacent property owners. We don't want to continue to hold them indefinitely at a cost of about $600 in maintenance a year. I'll see Dave Hansen nodding over there. We're going to track the dispositions to make sure that the state gets its 50%. This process could take decades. We've acquired so much property, so we're going to have to put in checks and balances to make sure that we keep track of everything in the future as we move on to other projects. We need to stay focused on that. In the APZ-1, we are going to continue to evaluate those opportunities to thin. And then, one of the things we've got going out there is a couple of short-term leases while we kind of hold them in, as we try to see if we can assemble them. It's going to be time to start phasing out some of those short-term leases and realize we may not get the assemblage that we want, and we just have to start selling them off. In the ITA, once the comprehensive plan is complete, we are going to look at a process for disposition. I expect that we're going to have some offer, you know, some interest in some of the property out there at some point, and we're going to have to be ready for that. But I think we're a few steps away from being ready there. Obviously, we have to know where the major roads are going to go. We have to just be, you know, ready for whatever it is that the city is going to need out there. I know Dave has a lot of plans for a lot of the property out there. We also plan to be ready for any future events. We are going to reassess our needs as the Joint Strike Fighter comes to the city. We're going to continue to assist the city of Chesapeake with its efforts. We have been working with them periodically. Now, they're really just getting started as we're wrapping up. And we're going to be, of course, following any news on an OLF. And most importantly, we're going to maintain statistics on what we've been doing, so that if there is another BRAC, we are ready, and we have our book to show them everything that we have accomplished and where we are. The program has been very successful the last 10 years. Council is to be complimented on this program and funding it every year. It has won a number of awards, including one for the mayor for the elected official of the year in 2012, and the city received the active base community of the year in 2010 by the Association of Defense Communities. And I thought this was interesting. This was side-by-side headline version of where we started and where we are now. In August of 2005, the tone of the newspaper was panic. In March of 2014, there was a commission that said, from the state, that said, "Bring on another BRAC, we're ready." So, I thought, "That right there says a lot about where we've been and where we are." And I am happy to answer any questions or to take any direction as to our plan.
You timed it perfectly. Six o'clock, it's great. But I would just say to you, Becky, you've worked very hard through this whole process and done an excellent job. I think we need to compliment the state for being our partners. They've really stepped up in the Navy, being the partners. It's no question in my mind that we're truly on the offense now, not on the defense. And I want to applaud Myra and the council, you know, that members here that, you know, dealt with the situation that wasn't very pleasant, but yet really did something bold. And again, I think we're certainly, I would never guarantee anything, but we're certainly prepared for BRAC if they want to come. Yes, sir.
Well, I think there's only two people in the room who were in Washington when we went up for the BRAC Commission. That's Jim and I. I don't know, were you there, Bob? Maybe through...
I was there.
Yeah, okay.
I was there. I met Jeb Bush.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, we saw him get up.
That's what I call a highlight.
But the point I was going to make, if you had been at that meeting, you would have thought that we were doomed, to tell you the truth. And to have the complete turnaround that we've had is just a credit to the staff and for how we've been able to turn this thing around and get it done and create such a success with it, that you can put that in your resume, Jim.
Catch you later for another job.
I'll bet you a ring.
I got you. We've got one more, then we'll get out of here, Barbara.
Just to say, this is not dealing with the property that was in the acquisition, but in the AQ's overlay area. You know, we're seeing that quite often now, particularly, you know, when applications come in for land use, particularly when it's close to those pre-existing neighborhoods. We had one last week, you know, where the neighbors forget that we have to have uses that are compatible with the Navy, not compatible with the residential neighborhood. You know, so now, you know, it's the implementation of all of this that we really still are called on to stand firm, because this is where our challenge is going to be a lot, I'm afraid.
Agreed.
You know, those neighbors have kind of forgotten, and I hope, I hope these neighborhoods somehow or other that, you know, if a neighborhood is in a greater than 75-deciibel zone, that it shows up in the documents that, you know, for somebody else purchasing it, that they know what they're purchasing, and that all that surrounding property around it's not going to be other residential property, it's got to be something else that's compatible with the Navy. And so, that's where we're going to continue to see our being called on to hang tough with all of this.
Absolutely. Amelia, then we'll call it a night.
I'm just saying, for not being part of all of this and listening to this comprehensive report, congratulations to all who were involved. And I think we need to give a round of applause for the success that has happened.
Okay. Well, we're done, and thank you all for everything.